All right, welcome to a national real estate exam prep. And we're going to go over some things that you need to know for your real estate exam. And we're going to go through a lot of contract stuff. I mean, this contract thing is really big on both the national and state side of things. So we're going to talk about the agency side of things. We're going to talk about some things that are in the contracted buy and sell. So there's going to be a lot of content that we're going to go over today, and this is truly going to help you prepare. So let's uh let's grab pen and paper and let's get this thing started. So to kick this thing off, we're going to talk about a listing agreement, four different types of listing agreements. And when we're talking about listing agreements, we have to keep in mind, this is like the first step. Right? This is the very first step into going through and helping someone find or sell a home. So we're going in and we have these four different types. We have an exclusive right, we have an exclusive agency, an open listing and a net listing. So when we're looking at this thing, the exclusive right to sell in this agreement, the agent gets paid no matter who sells the property, regardless of whether it's the agent or the seller. So test question, what this could look like is which one of these agreements has the most protection for the agent? Alright, so this is the exclusive right to sell. It means this, if you have the sign in the yard and the neighbor walks across the street and knocks on the door and says, hey, neighbor, I have someone that I know is interested in buying your house. You, the real estate agent, are still going to get paid. Irregardless of whether you were the person that made the introduction or not. So the most protections for the agent, I believe, is what your test question is going to look like. And it's the exclusive right. Then we have the exclusive agency. And agents get paid in this type of agreement only if they sell the property. No fee is earned if the owner alone sells the property. So I think the test question on this one is going to say, which one of these agency agreements must the agent be the procuring cause? Alright, this is a procuring cause question. So what this means is your signs in the yard. And if they walk across the street again, knock on the door and say, hey, neighbor, I have someone that is interested in buying your house. You, the real estate agent, do not get paid. And so where this would, you know, get come up and kind of show up in in different senses is this. The exclusive agency agreement means no other real estate agent can be involved in the transaction, right? So it's not like a real estate agent is going to see your sign in the yard and then be able to go around you. You would be the only real estate agent that's associated with this transaction. Yet, if the seller finds their own buyer, you do not get paid. You must be the procuring cause. Now we have an open listing. Alright, so an open listing is this. I want you to picture you were driving down the street. And you see this home. And there's three or four different for sale signs in this yard. Alright, there's three or four different for sale signs. And you stop at the third for sale sign. And you get the number and you call it. And you say, hey, real estate agent, I'm interested in one, two, three Main Street. And you put the deal together, that real estate agent gets paid. Alright, so again, you still must be the procuring cause. Now, what makes this different than the exclusive agency is is there's multiple real estate agents competing for one home. Three, four different yard signs are in this yard. Whichever yard sign gets the phone call is the procuring cause and they get paid. Now, with that being said, you stop the car, you get out. And you walk to the door and you knock on the door and you say, hey, Mr. Mrs. Seller, I just noticed that you were selling your home and I'm actually interested in buying it. No real estate agent gets paid now. Alright, so in the open listing, you are competing against other real estate agents. And you still must be the procuring cause to get paid. And the the seller is not obligated to pay a commission to any real estate agent if they are not the procuring cause. Now in net listing, a net list is this, a net listing is you're talking to a seller and in my mind, it looks like they're probably in a tight situation. Alright, they're in a tight situation and or they're not super familiar with the area. Alright, and they're talking to you, the real estate agent, and they say, hey, you know what? I'm selling this home and I need to make $200,000. So they need to net, right? Their take home. After expenses, they need to net $200,000. And so you go through and you say, awesome, well, if we were to list your home for, let's say, $500,000, you would be able to take home $200,000 after expenses. And and how about this? How about any dollar that we sell your home for above $500,000, you'll make your 200,000 and you allow me to keep the rest as my compensation? Well, that's perfectly legal. So on the national side of things, that's legal. This is what I think the test question is going to look like, though. Which one of these agency agreements is legal? Yet may entice the agent to act unethically? This is an ethics question because here's the thing. Once someone comes to you and they say, you know, I just need to make $200,000 and you're like, awesome. Well, if we were to list your home for 500,000, you would net $200,000. And how about this? How about you let me keep every dollar above 500,000 as long as you made 200? And they say, absolutely, thank you for doing that. Yet you know, the home itself for $600,000 and your commission would be 100,000. That's an ethics dilemma at that point, right? And I say it's an ethics dilemma. This is the thing. I think you lose your license. Um, I mean, the board, you're, there's going to be some bad things if that truly happens. Yet if you're doing it and you're making a compensation that is kind of like an industry historical benchmark, right? So like, if real estate agents are typically making around $6,000 in the area historically, and that's how much your compensation is, no harm, no foul. You're making double, triple, quadruple that. Um, you're probably getting reported to the board and you're probably getting sued and maybe potentially even losing your license at that point. So exclusive right, most protections for the agent. Exclusive agency must be the procuring cause. And net listing is legal, yet may entice the real estate agent to act unethically. I think those are going to be the three questions you guys get around. So important questions, important topic, you're you're going to get some questions. Now, when we're talking about these agreements, we need to be able to understand who these players are, right? We have ourself, right? The the real estate agent. And then we have a principal and or client. Now, I want you guys to know that a principal and client are the exact same. Alright, for the purpose of the test, I want you to think of the principal and the client as the exact same person. This is the person that is engaging the real estate agent in an agency relationship. Alright, so this is a client or a principal. And us, the real estate agent, we would have an agency relationship with them. Now, who we also have is a customer. And a customer could show up in two different ways into your world. We could be representing the seller. And while the buyer is also represented, they would be your customer. And on the flip side, if you represent the buyer and the seller is also represented by another real estate agent, the seller is your customer. Alright, so that's one side of the equation. When you guys get a test question, it's just that third party. Alright, the third party is a customer. Now, another way I think this could show up is here. You're hosting an open house. Alright, and historically speaking, in, you know, the grand scheme and mechanics of everything, if you're hosting an open house, you're most likely the listing agent. Alright, you're the listing agent. You're representing the seller. That means that someone that walks in off the street would be a customer. Alright, you would have a customer relationship with that person, right? So the customer comes through. This means there is no fiduciary relationship, right? Because a fiduciary relationship is for a principal or for a client because we have agency. Now, this is just some random third party. So if you represent one party of a transaction, the third party, the opposite side of the transaction, you would treat as a customer. Or if you are working with the seller in a agency relationship, the customer would be the third party walking in off the street to come toward the open house. Alright, so I think on your test, they're going to probably throw one of those scenarios at you. And you're just going to have to know that that's the customer relationship at that point, which you have zero fiduciary responsibilities to. We only have fiduciary responsibilities to a principal or a client. They're not in transaction brokerage and they're not with the customer whatsoever. So when we talk about fiduciary, alright, so fiduciary means faithful servant. And an agent is a fiduciary of the client. In real estate, a broker or a salesperson can be the agent for a seller or a buyer. Now, on your exam, most of these questions are going to be laid up from the perspective of the sell side. You are working for the seller you're working for as the listing agent. Alright, so keep in mind that buyer agency is relatively new in the grand scheme of things. And so a lot of these test questions are going to be laid up from the side of you being on the seller's representation. Which means that, well, I don't have this up on the slide deck. If you get something called co-op, right? They're talking about co-op, the co-op agent. That they're referring to the buyer always, 100% of the time. If they say co-op and they're talking about an agent, they are talking about the buyer's agent 100% of the time. They will never be talking about the listing agent. Because the listing agent is giving maybe uh co-op compensation could be something that they're going to refer to on the exam. And that means buyer's agent. There is buyer's agent compensation that is being offered. So when we're talking about the six fiduciary duties of a real estate agent, we have confidentiality, obedience, loyalty, disclosure, accounting and care. Now, when we're looking at this thing, the agent must keep confidential information given to them by their client, especially information that may be damaging to the client in a negotiation. Like, if it says that the seller needs to be in a new state to start their job in 30 days, we're not disclosing that to the buyer. That might be information that they could be using against them. Obedience, the agent must obey all lawful orders that the client gives them, right? If the client tells you to do something and it is in the transaction and is related to the transaction, you cannot do anything other than what the client has directed you to do. Now, if they direct you to do something unlawful, something against the law, obviously, we're not following that. Loyalty, the agent owes undivided loyalty to the client and puts the client's interest above their own. If there's two homes and both homes meet the client's needs and one home is offering you more compensation, but the other home you know would be a better fit for your client, you're going to show them the other home, even though you're getting paid less. You must put your client's needs above your own. Disclosure, the agent must disclose to the client any information that he or she receives that may benefit the client. So if you're going forward and let's say you're representing, it doesn't matter, any party. And let's say that you overhear something about the third party, right? So you represent the seller, you overhear something about the buyer. You must give that information to your client. Right? So that's one of the things, like when we're talking about disclosure, I want you guys to go back to that open house, right? Let's go back to the open house situation where we know that we represent the seller. That third party walks in off the street, they are a customer. We know that we have to give a brokerage disclosure at the most convenient time, right? So if someone walks in off the street and they're a buyer and they start saying, oh, my God, I'm about to be homeless, like my my landlord is selling the house that I live in. I need to buy a house. This house meets all my needs. I would even go $100,000 over asking. Well, what do we have to do with that information? Well, we know that for an agent, we have to disclose all that information to our client now. So that's why it's imperative when we are doing an open house that we give disclosure, brokerage disclosure to the customer saying, hey, please, before you give me any motivating factors, before you tell me anything that I must use against you, please read this. I represent the seller. I can help you as a customer, which means I owe you zero fiduciary responsibility and anything you say or do will be used against you in negotiations. That's disclosure. Accounting, we got to know where all of our clients' money is. And we cannot co-mingle, right? We can't combine our clients' money with our own money. We have to make sure that we are being responsible with their funds and then care. Right? We have to use our abilities to the best of our ability on behalf of our client. Now, guys, to remember this, there is an acronym. And it is COLD AC, right? This is COLD AC is how you can remember this. And so how I would show up with this is if you get a test question that says like, which one of these is not a fiduciary duty for a real estate agent? It's going to be a different letter. That that's my my best tip for you, right? If you're going to go through this, they're going to say, which one of these is not a fiduciary duty in a client agent relationship? And it's something that starts with like an F. Well, we know that that acronym COLD AC doesn't fit with F anywhere. And that is the answer, which one is not? So then what do we owe a customer? We have to act honestly, like we can't lie to them, right? That's going to be the biggest thing. We can't lie to a customer. Reasonable care. Reasonable care is different than care when we were talking about a client. Reasonable care means we're willing to help out as long as it doesn't put our client in a disadvantage, right? Care on the other side of things, when a fiduciary means we're going to use our skills to the best of our ability. Reasonable care means I'm willing to help to the extent of it doesn't help my or doesn't hurt my client. And what I mean by that is maybe I am given a phone call out to a customer and saying, hey, we're to a date and deadline and I just wanted to see if you had anything for us. And they say, well, hey, um, I actually have a question. Well, here's the thing, I represent the seller. I'm not going to be able to answer any questions that could potentially hurt my client, but reasonable care means that I could still reach out to them and just see if they have anything for us. Yet I'm not going to give them advice. And then disclosure of material facts, right? We always, always, always must disclose material defects. And a material defect is this, right? When we're talking about material defects, I want you to think of a leaking roof, like that's where my head goes, a leaking roof. When do you know that a roof leaks? When it rains. Alright, so during a home inspection during a sunny day, no one is going to be able to know if the roof leaks. I get it. There could be a stain on the ceiling or maybe there is some um wet insulation, right? Totally get all that. Yet, with disclosure material defects, it's typically something out of the norm that a typical home inspection would not find. And that's where my mind goes with this leaking roof because unless it's raining, you're typically not going to know that the roof leaks. So with the customer, these are the only three things that you owe a customer. You have to be honest, reasonable care and disclosure of material defects. The only thing. So now let's switch this thing over, right? So we're we're through agency and this is pretty much out of the property ownership section. And yet I think it really ties well with the contract to buy and sell. So when we're looking at this thing, the the first way that two people or more could take over a property would be tenancy in common. Alright, so we have tenancy in common, which is equal or unequal, undivided ownership between two or more people is what characterizes this type of ownership. What we also have to know is this. If an owner dies, the deceased person's share is conveyed to their heirs, not the other owners. Alright, so tenancy in common means if you pass away and you have this type of ownership, that your will will dictate who gets your share of that home. So if you own the home 50/50 with somebody else and you pass away and your will says that one of your kids or family members or friends or whomever charity gets your half of the home, then there it is. They get that half of the home. We have joint tenancy. And joint tenancy has these four unities. Interest, everyone has the same interest in the home, right? So if it's three people, it's 33, 33, 33. If it's four people, it's 25, 25, 25, 25. Right? When we're talking about going through, all owners hold an undivided interest. Well, that means this. I want you to picture a room, any room, the room that you're sitting in right now. Undivided interest means if you were to put a piece of blue tape down the center of that room, well, now it's divided. Right? And so we're not saying that, hey, you get the left half of the blue tape and I get the right half of the blue tape. We're saying that, hey, you get half the window, just as much as I get to use half the window, right? Like it's undivided interest where we all get to use the same space as much as we want to use the space. We're not dictating a blue line that says, hey, that's your side. This is my side. Time, we all must come into ownership at the same time. Alright, so if we're buying the house, we all have to buy the house on the same date. And then title, all owners acquire their interest with the same deed. Now let's go over this last one. I'm going to tell you guys some things from there. So it says joint tenancy. When we have joint tenancy, if one owner dies, we have what's called the right of survivorship. I think you're going to get some test questions around the right of survivorship. And so joint tenancy and the right of survivorship go hand in hand, which means if one party dies, the other parties get their interest. So say there's right, there's four people. And one party dies, right? So now we have 25%. And while I can't do this math on the top of my head, it means that that 25% would be split three ways to the other three owners that are still alive. That's the right of survivorship. So I think you could see a test question and this test question could look like, um, let's say that someone is selling their um share in a house, right? So you're going through and someone is selling, or maybe they're just bringing on another another person. Right? So there's three people and they're like, you know what? Let's bring on a fourth person. Well, if you're looking at this thing, it might say like, who and how would this person take the deed to the home? Right? Like, how would they take title? Well, by knowing these two definitions, right? Tenancy in common and joint tenancy and joint tenancy. Firstly, we know that they had have taken it all at the same time. As well as they all have the same amount of shares in the home. We know that the the new person would have to be a tenants in common. So let's say we have three joint tenants, right? They all bought the home on day one. All three of us bought a home day one. We all took over um title as joint tenants. And let's just say that, you know, right, life is getting a little bit rough right now and getting a little bit expensive. We're like, we need another roommate and let's uh sell, you know, 25%. So we go out, we find, we put on Craigslist, Facebook Marketplace, whatever, and we find a fourth person that wants to buy in on this home. They would take over as a tenant in common. The three of us would stay joint tenants. The new person would be a tenant in common. Alright, I actually think that's going to be your test question. Like as you're rolling through this, I actually think that lines up as a test question where you have X amount of people, they're all joint tenants. How does the the next person come over and and take title as a tenant in common? And then we have severalty. Severalty is just one. And I think this is how your test question is going to look. It's going to say like, which one of these can uh take title in severalty? And they're going to say, um, one person, an individual, an LLC, a corporation and a partnership. Well, partnerships more than one. Right? So they're going to try to trip you up and for you to think like an LLC or a corporation is more than one. Not not necessarily like one person could be the the face of everything and hold the interest. A partnership, however, is more than one, 100% of the time. Partnership means more than one. And so that's going to be your test question. Which one of these can not take over title as in severalty? Partnership, that's the answer. Then we're going to go through and just want to pull some of these things out, guys. Tenancy by the entirety, that's ownership that's available only to married couples. Alright, so with that being said, uh, tenancy in the entirety, you might see this on the national side of the test. That's all it is. We also have different different types of homes, right? We have a timeshare. And really, they're just vacation property in my eyes, right? When I see a timeshare, I'm just thinking that this is a vacation property where I maybe have like a week out of the year, right? There's like 52 other owners. And we all get to hang out in the home for one week out of the year. And really, that's how it is like, and it could be a quarter, it could be a month, it could be whatever, but it is time that we are sharing with other owners. That is a timeshare. Cooperative, that is just a building that's owned by a corporation. And again, there's shareholders. So each shareholder actually has the right to use the common areas. Alright, so I have a co-op. So this is a cooperative. It is owned by a corporation. And instead of paying rent, you're actually buying like a share or you get a share and that share entitles you to your 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 space, right? So picture a condo, picture an apartment, one of those, it's owned by a corporation. And the corporation gives out shares that share actually gives you one of the units and you actually get to use the elevator, the the parking, all those different things. We have an encumbrance. An encumbrance is just a claim, right? It's a burden, it's a restriction. It is something that is on the ownership rights. Alright, so what it's doing, it's going through and it is putting a burden on some of your ownership rights. And then we have an easement. And really just an easement, I want you to really think for whatever purposes, this is a pathway, it's a walkway, it's a driveway. It is the right for someone to use your property. Right? This is a walkway, a driveway, a path, something where someone is allowed to use your property to get somewhere. It could be to their home. It could be to the beach. It could be to the walking trail up the mountain. It could be any of those things. It could be Excel Energy. Um, wanting to access the power box in the back of your home, they have an easement to do that. Cool. So as we roll through and we're still, I still want you guys to be thinking of the contract to mine cell. This is still what we are kind of dealing with right now. It's still property ownership, but it's still in the contract. We have real property and personal property. Alright, so real property, guys, this is the land and anything that's affixed to the land. Alright, so what we have to be thinking about as we're going in here, the difference between real property and personal property is real property is the land and it's anything that is attached to the land as well. Where personal property, personal property is things that aren't attached to the land that could be conveyed, right? They they absolutely could be conveyed in the contract to buy and sell. Yet, personal property is not given over in the deed, it's given over by a bill of sale. Alright, so let's say that you're going through and I want you to picture a vacation property, go up into the mountains. And it's a nice home, right? We're talking, we're talking $10 million home. Alright, so picture that $10 million vacation property up in the mountains and it has custom furniture, right? Like someone went out and they spent a lot of money on this custom furniture to fit into this $10 million home. Well, you don't purchase the furniture with the house. Okay, like you're not going to get a mortgage for the furniture, right? Okay, like you're not gonna get a mortgage for the furniture, right? Because you know, if the bank has to foreclose on this home. How are they going to recoup the money for the furniture? So what has to happen is you actually have to have a bill of sale. You actually strike up a second agreement and a bill of sale. That sells the furniture to the buyer. Alright, and so personal property, when we're going through, we're talking about rights and interests in the land include air rights, water rights, mineral rights, oil and gas. And improvements may be natural. They could be growing. Or man-made fixtures. Personal property attached to the improvements becomes a fixture. So. When we're going through, I think the biggest thing is this. I want you to picture a microwave. Alright. So we, we know what a microwave looks like. I want you to put that microwave on your counter. Alright, your microwave is now sitting on your counter in your kitchen. That's personal property. It's not attached to anything. But I want you to take that same. Microwave. And I want you to put it above your oven. Alright, so now it's above your oven. And it's attached to the cabinet. Well, now it's a fixture. Alright, so now we can see actually how the exact same item. Can go from personal property to a fixture just by a couple of screws. Alright, so for your test. That's how you're going to be able to go through and know if it's personal property or it's a fixture. It could be the exact same item, right? I think the test even might talk about lumber. Right? Like I, you gotta stack a lumber that's sitting in the backyard. Nails, screws. Well, that's all personal property. Now if I take that lumber and I turn it into a fence. Right? Now we have a fixture, right? It's now. Different. It's affixed to the property at that point. So. One of your test questions might also be this. You're going through and it says. That maybe you had a chandelier, right? We know a chandelier is gonna be a fixture, right? It, it's purposeful. It has a spot in the ceiling. But yet it's closing day and the fixture is gone. Well, how in the world could a fixture be gone? And I'm not saying like. How did they take the fixture down, right? They, they had a screwdriver and they took the fixture down. They got on a ladder and they did all that. That's not the question. The question is, how is this legal? Well, it's legal if they put it in the contract. They can actually mark a fixture as an exclusion. And actually take it with them. And I actually think you're gonna see a test question because they're gonna want you to be able to identify. How can fixtures that are not personal property be taken? When they're supposed to be left with the property? Well. They're able to be taken when the seller vacates the home because they actually put it in the contract as an exclusion. So then it says the tests for distinguishing fixtures from personal property are based on determining the interest of the parties. The test includes methods of attachment, abdication. Of the, the property, the relationship to the parties and any provision in a written contract, which we just talked about. Fixtures are considered real property and are conveyed in the deed. And it says this, all valid deeds must contain a legal description of the land and when we're going through this, you're gonna get a test question. I think the test question is gonna say, which one of these is not a valid legal description? Well, the three that we have here, meets and bounds, rectangular survey and lot and block are all valid legal descriptions. The property address. And the tax ID number. I think you're gonna get hit with property address. I think that's gonna be the test question. Property address is not a valid legal description. Yes, that's how we put it into our phones to go find a home. Or a point of interest yet. That is not a valid legal description. Also, guys, I want you to know this, the priority of liens. The priority of liens is really in the order of which the lien is filed. The only. Exception. Is a tax lien. Uncle Sam. Uncle Sam gets to jump the line. Alright, so Uncle Sam, if there is five other liens, right? And typically the mortgage is the first one. Right? The mortgage, they go through and that's how we are securing that debt is through a mortgage. And we got four other ones below the mortgage and taxes aren't paid. Uncle Sam gets to jump to number one. Everything else gets filed in the order of which it is filed. Position one, two, three, four, five. Yet you don't pay your taxes. They get to cut the line all the way to number one. I think you could see a test question right? We have voluntary and involuntary lien. Alright, so voluntary lien is this. It's the mortgage, right? So when we go through this and we talk about the mortgageor. Who is actually the borrower. Know that for your test. And the mortgagee is also the bank. So the mortgageor is actually. The borrower. The mortgagee is actually the bank, the lender. And so the mortgageor goes, hey, bank, I would like to borrow six hundred thousand dollars to go buy a house. And the bank says. What are you gonna put up as collateral? You're gonna say, well, the house. I'm gonna put the house up as collateral. So you actually mortgage the home. You don't go get a mortgage. You actually mortgage the house. Huge misconception. And so we're going through and that's a voluntary lien. We put a lien on the house. We say, hey, bank, if I don't pay you back your six hundred thousand dollars. Take the home from me. That's a voluntary lien. Involuntary lien would be this. Let's say you have that home now and you do a rental project. Let's say it's a deck. So you go through and you have this new deck built because it's above your skill set. Or maybe you just don't have time and so you hire out the work. Well, you don't pay your bills. You don't pay. The contractor for building this brand new deck. You have an involuntary lien on your helm. They go, they file the lien. So that when you go to sell your house. They get paid. That is what an involuntary lien is. So a voluntary lien, I really want you guys to go mortgage. A mortgage is a voluntary lien. Involuntary, I want you to think that you didn't pay a trades uh person. And they filed a lien on your home so that when you do go to sell your home, they get paid. And specific, specific lien is this. It's on one property. Alright, so specifically is on one property. That's that voluntary lien. I go through. And I need to borrow six hundred thousand dollars to buy a house. I put a lien on the home. That I want to buy to secure the six hundred thousand dollars from the bank. Specific voluntary lien. General lien, right? This could attach to any number of properties. I want you like, maybe think of like child support. Right? I want you to think about something, right? Like a, a judgment against you. So a judgment means that they're gonna put it on all of your stuff and once you go to sell it. So firstly, it's involuntary, like you didn't go, you didn't wanna go to court and get sued and, and have to pay someone a bunch of money. And as general, they're gonna put it on all your property. So we have a general involuntary lien. But we got types of deeds, right? So we're going through, we just talked about. Um, how we're gonna go through and take over property. Well, we're gonna get a deed. And so the, the big deed, the general warranty deed, this offers the most protections. And we're gonna talk about this on the next slide, but I want you to go general warranty deed. That's the best deed that there is. Most protections. And I want you to know this. It's from the beginning of time. Until. The seller sells it. Alright, the grantor until the grantor. Grants it to the grantee. So that means like it was built day one. And I am selling it. I am going to warranty that entire time. Special warranty deed. This is only during the grantor's. Ownership. So the day that they bought the home. To the day that they are selling the home, that's all their warranty. So grantor, when we're talking about general warranty. They are warranting this entire allotment of time that this home has been in existence. Where special is going through and it's the day that I bought it to the day that I am selling it to you. That's special. Quick claim. There's no warranties or promises here. I really want you to think of a quick claim is clearing cloud on title. Alright, so I, I really want your minds to go there. Quick claim, clearing cloud on title. And for that, let's go do this. Let's say uh we have. An unmarried couple. And they own a home together. Alright, so we have this unmarried couple. They own a home and they get married. Cool. Now they're married. And let's say that the wife is taking her husband's last name. Alright, historically speaking, we know that this is, this is accurate. So. The wife takes her husband's last name. Well. Whose last name is on? The deed. Well, it's her maiden name. Her maiden name's on the deed, but she has a new last name. So we file a quick claim deed to change her maiden name to now her married name. And that's how we clear that cloud on title. Alright, so that's where I want your head to go for a quick claim. And then bargain and sales deed, I really want you to go through. Like courthouse steps, right? Like there's no warranties. The only warranty is this. I own the home and I'm able to sell it to you. Really where this is gonna show up, I want you to think of foreclosure. Alright, so we got a foreclosure and the bank has the right to take the home. And that's all they're saying. They're saying, listen. I have the right to sell you this home. I took the home because. The borrower did not pay us our money, so we took the home from them and we are selling it to recoup our losses. We don't know anything about this home except for we have the right to sell it. That's bargain and sales deed. That's how that would show up. General warranty, most protections, longest time. Special warranty has less protections, shorter time. Quick claim deed, no protections, clearing cloud on title. Bargain and sales deed, I want you to think of courthouse steps, foreclosure. Now we're talking about this general warranty deed. And it does have the most protections and it has these covenants. So we have the covenant of Cessin. Quiet enjoyment. Against encumbrances. And future assurances. So really what we're going through and we're saying this, we're saying, hey, I own the home and I have the right to transfer ownership. That's Cessin. Quiet enjoyment means, hey. If anybody pops up down the road and says that they actually have a right. I am still going to protect you. Remember. The entire time that this home has been existence, we are protecting that. We are warranting against the entire time. So three homeowners ago pops up and say that they still own the home. Me, the grantor that sold you the house, I got your back. Against encumbrances, right? We're going through and we're saying, hey, there's no liens or easements or anything weird on this house. Yes, there are some easements, right? We know the, like the electrical company, the utilities, all those, yes, those. But if there's any hidden, we're not saying, there's no hidden uh easements, right? There's nothing weird that we're not uh letting you know upfront. As well as I don't have any liens on the home that someone's gonna come after you later for. And guess what? If one pops up, I have your back. And then future assurances, which really just means this, hey, if there is a problem that I already told you I have your back for, I'll provide the documents. Right? Like, so you were going through and you were really saying with this general warranty deed. The longest and most protections that anything pops up, I have your back is what this general warranty deed does. So that's why I want you to think about just contracts. We're going through here, we got a breach, right? We got a breach of a contract and this is the violation. Right? We got a violation of the terms. So someone's in default. And we got a couple of different ways that we can go about this. We can rescind the offer. We can sue for damages. Or we can sue for performance. So let's talk about liquidated damages. This is a provision that allows for the payment of a specific sum. So most commonly, I want you guys to think of earnest money. What happens if the buyer's in default? If they breach the contract, the seller typically gets to keep the earnest money. That's liquidated damages. Hey, you screwed up. You are in breach of our contract. Seller is keeping the earnest money. Specific performance. I want you to think of this. It's always on the seller. It could be on the buyer, but it's always on the seller. So on your test question, I want you to think of the seller. Seller's going through, they're selling the home and like a day before closing, they get cold. Alright, and they say, listen. Buyer, you're a good person. And yet. I have too many memories in this home and it will break my heart to go through with this deal. And that's probably a little bit extreme because now you're probably feeling pretty good for the seller and you're like, oh man, seller, I feel you. Yeah, here's the thing. We have a contract in place and the buyer can sue the seller to make them sell the house. Hey, we have a contract. I am suing you to go forward with this contract. That's liquidated, or I'm sorry, that's specific performance. Specific performance, you were suing to make someone go forward with the contract. And rescission. We're just going through, we're putting everyone back into neutral. The contract never happened. We are rescinding the offer. Both parties have to agree to this. And they're saying, listen, Leenow, let's just cancel the contract. We'll both go back to square one. Give me back my earnest money as the buyer. Seller won't get sued. This is rescission. This is a termination. Like this is really what this looks like. Now this is where it would show up. With electronic signatures and global and national commerce act. All this means everyone is this. Your electronic signature holds just as much weight as a wet signature does. Alright, like this is not. The nineteen eighties. The beginning of nineteen nineties, right? Where we're running around and dropping off contracts to have them signed. And just picture that for anyone that's bought a house in the last couple of years, like super painful. And yet, what this means is if we do a contract on a piece of software. And all parties sign, those contracts hold just as much weight as a physical piece of paper. Bilateral contract, that just means two parties, right? A promise for a promise. Buyer says, hey, seller, I will give you six hundred thousand dollars. To let me buy your house. And the seller says. Hey, buyer, if you give me six hundred thousand dollars, I will give you the house. That's bilateral. Both parties have to perform. One person has to give six hundred thousand dollars. One person has to give a house. That is a bilateral contract. Unilateral contract, this means one party. One party has to perform and here's your test question. It's an option. So when you get a test question that reads. Which one of these types of contracts is a unilateral contract? The app, the, the answer is gonna be option. I don't even need to see the other questions. That's gonna be your answer. So an option contract, this says this, it says. The buyer comes up and they say, hey, seller, I would love to buy your house. And seller says, hey, you know what? The home's not for sale. The buyer says, hey, I got sweet terms for you. I want to buy your house and I will pay you way more money than your home's worth. And the seller says, okay, you have a deal. Buyer says, well, hold on, I don't have the money. And I need fifteen days to go get the money. Well, the buyer now has fifteen days to go get the money if they have this deal. Yet the buyer doesn't ever have to perform. The buyer never has to go find the money. And even if the buyer did find the money, they don't have to actually give it to the seller. The seller, on the other hand, has to wait the fifteen days, can't sell it to anybody else. And if the buyer actually comes up with the money, has to sell the house. That is a unilateral contract. That is an option. And it says when the contract exists and we add something to, new to it, that's an addendum. So we have an addendum. We have a contract, all parties have signed. We're going down the road, maybe ten, fifteen days later. The new document that enters into this contract is an addendum. When you see the word amendment, that's a change. Maybe we're changing the sell date. That is an amendment. Alright, so we are amending the contract. We are changing like a date. That's what I want you to think of. A date's changing. And then we have clauses. Clauses are just sections of writing that are actually in the contract. And when we're talking about clauses. Here's one for you and this is around. Financing. We have an acceleration clause. Alright, so we have this acceleration clause. And that means this. We screwed up as the borrower and the bank wants all the money today. Hey, I know you had fifteen years left. You screwed up. We're accelerating your mortgage. We want all of the money you owe us today. That's an acceleration clause. We also have what's a due on sales clause, which is also known as alienation. So an alienation clause means this, if you leave the home. You owe the bank all their money. So what you can't do is this. You can't actually sell your house. For way more than you bought it, pocket the money and still just pay the bank their monthly payment. They don't allow you to do that. If you sell the home. You leave the home, you owe the bank all of the money that you owe them. That's the alienation clause. We have a release clause. This is actually a good thing. It's called a defeasance clause. So defeasance clause is this, you've paid the bank back all of their money. Alright, so you've paid the bank back all of their money. And now you get released. It's a defeasance clause to where they no longer have a lien on your home. Subordination, right? This is just where we're going through and we're talking about the order of claims. Alright, so we have first order, second order, three, right? We're just going through, that's subordination. Contingency is gonna be important. Alright, so when you're talking about contingency, you're gonna get these test questions. They're gonna talk about contingencies. Some of the big ones, loan contingency, right? We need to actually go find the money. Hey, Mr. and Mrs. Seller, I really wanna buy your home contingent. Upon me of actually going out and getting a loan for six hundred thousand dollars. We also have. A, um. Inspection contingency. Hey, Mr. and Mrs. Seller. I want to buy your home. Contingent upon what the inspection looks like. So they're gonna call them contingencies. That's what it is. They are things that are in the contract. They are outs. In the grand scheme of things, they are outs. For clients, which means this. The buyer. Gets their earnest money back. If. On or before the contingency deadline occurs. Alright, so if they're gonna go through and we have the inspection termination. Contingency. And it says. That the buyer gets their money back if they use that right. On or before that day. So they say, hey, Mr. and Mrs. Seller, listen. Um, we found some things with your home that I'm not comfortable taking on. They get to use this contingency and actually get their earnest money back. Now, here you go. I want you to know this. You're probably gonna get a test question that's gonna allude around contingencies and. I want you to know that every home is sold as is where is. With all faults. So if you get a test question that says that the buyer found all these issues with the home, and I think you're gonna see this test question. Um, they found a bunch of issues with the home. What must the seller do? Nothing. The seller doesn't have to do anything. The buyer might say, I want you to fix this and this. No, the seller does not have to. The market's gonna dictate that, right? We're in a seller's market. They're probably not gonna do anything because they got other buyers that are looking to buy their house. We're in a buyer's market, they're probably gonna spend the money to have it all fixed. So. You're gonna get a test question. And the test question's gonna allude to all these issues that are wrong with the home. What must the seller do? The seller must do nothing. Now, if the buyer wants to walk away, the buyer gets their earnest money back. But the seller is not obligated to fix anything. And then I want you to know what time is of the essence. Time is of the essence means this. That we have a contract and our contract is dictating. Dates and deadlines. Those dates and deadlines are strictly enforced. Alright, so if it says tomorrow. We are working to get everything done. To meet that deadline of tomorrow. It doesn't mean that something doesn't can pop up, right? Life pops up. Life is messy. We know that if we go through and we have a time is of the essence and there's an issue where we can't make it to tomorrow. Well, that's when we're gonna do an amendment. We're gonna amend the date, right? That's how an amendment shows up. We're all planning on getting to this finish line on the date that we said we would. Yet. Life gets messy. And we know that we might not hit that deadline.